I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everybody. All right, so move on to 2.0, the agenda approval. Does anybody need to add or remove or anything good? Do we have anything yet there?
No, we got it, yeah.
We got it all?
Switch piles here.
I move the accepted agenda stated.
All right, go.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept the agenda stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move on to 3.0, visitors to address the board. This is the time for public comment on non-agenda items. The board will not take any immediate action, but will refer concerns to the superintendent and ask him to report to the board. We appreciate you keeping your comments to three minutes per individual or five minutes if you're representing a group of patrons. Do we have anybody, Christy? No requests for that part? Okay, so then we'll move on to 4.0, the consent agenda. Anybody have any changes or questions on that one?
Remove, we accept this presented.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to accept the consent agenda as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we will now move on to 5.0, the St. Helens High School bond project update. How was that for speed?
That was good.
Good.
Moving along. So I'm gonna kind of facilitate.
You're on, you're on.
All right, so we'll let Brian come on in.
We are, we're staring at it.
You caught us from the one to the next, so we're eating dinner in the middle.
So, most of these faces are very familiar to the board, and I've asked them to kind of give kind of a mid or maybe a third, third of the way project update as our high school construction project is moving forward. We do have a bond on the May ballot, which I'll give an update later on this evening, but I thought it would be just a really good time for our project management team, Cornerstone, our architect Soderstrom, and our contractors Hoffman kind of share an overview of where the project is and give the board a chance to ask questions that they're hearing in the community that people want to know about the project. So hopefully we can continue that support and momentum that we have moving forward. So I've asked each of them to kind of share a little bit where we're at, maybe how we work together, and then at the end we'll give you a chance to ask questions. And I've got a few questions too that I'd like to see if they can answer. So I'd like to have our team here introduce themselves, and we'll start with Cornerstone.
Good evening, you're in the project management group. We are working on the project and a good update today. Lionel Martin and Mark Parsons, the onsite superintendent for Hoffman. Brian Rades, project manager.
And your what? Well, welcome. Let's go ahead, it makes sense to me to go ahead and start with our project management team.
Okay, thanks Scott. So we're really excited to be here. You know, I was here a couple few months ago with Mark to give an update. You know, it's a really exciting project, a big project. We do a number of these high school additional renovations. Done a number of those over the years, and they're always exciting. They're always challenging because, you know, there's some projects where it's greenfield, we go in and we just need to tear down a building and still build a new one. But, you know, when you're doing a project that's multi-phase, you're working around the kids, it's real challenging. But it's always exciting, so we're really excited to get this one going. And I think what we talked about previous board meeting was just the challenge, challenging time of sort of when this one was bid. It was right when the economy was, you know, really, we're seeing about 15% inflation in construction per year. But, you know, we, I think, the team, really strong team here. We, the whole way through the design process, we were estimating the project and trying to predict where the costs were going to come in. And we knew, you know, we just had to balance that all the way through. And so we worked our way all the way to, you know, the selection of Hoffman, the construction manager, general contractor. We got the bid day and got really good bid coverage for the most part. And, you know, we finally got started. So right now we are, you know, about halfway, a little more than halfway through the first phase. It's really two major phases of construction. So it was very exciting to get in to that A building mainly and start that project. And if you haven't been in there, I know there's a webcam. You can check it out, but it's, it's pretty transformative. And starting to see that design come together and new, you know, it was really amazed before as you went in there. And I know I got lost first couple times going through there, but starting to see a new cafeteria come together, the new entry, kind of where, you know, kind of, I guess, the heart of that, that whole portion of the school. So it's been really exciting. And we meet every week, owner, architect, contractor meeting. Tuesday is our big day onsite. And we, you know, cover a lot of issues every week. We, you know, work through various cost issues or unforeseen. I mean, that's one of the biggest things with the renovations. It seems like every time you open the ceiling or a wall or the ground, you know, you're gonna find something that's a little different so than planned or not known. So, but we have, you know, we found a way to move forward with these portions of the project. I think that we'll get into maybe a little bit later is, you know, what the bond would help to do, to help finish some of the existing scope and some additional scope. But, you know, I guess I could say we've got a great team out there. A lot of good bonding subcontractors, some local contractors as well. And I know Hoffman's been doing as much as they can to buy locally, Mark and Brian, and stuff like that a little bit. But yeah, I'm kind of, kind of there for my update. It's just, it's exciting at this point in the project.
So I'll add a couple of comments. You know, I get to watch the team really commit to the CMBC process where the contractor comes on and partners with the district to help understand existing conditions at the building, take a look at long lead with COVID. It's just been really interesting what, what takes longer than it used to. Some things that were 20 weeks are 45 weeks now. It's getting better, but when we were bidding, we bid it right in the middle of all of that. The four things that Cornerstone works together with our clients on, cost, schedule, quality, and relationships. I watch those things really closely through John and through Becca. Cost, we're actually better than I projected we would be. We did not have to spend a lot of money taking care of rock. We did not have to spend a lot of money taking care of unsuitable soil. As we opened up the building, the structure is actually good. We have to do a lot of fire life safety improvements, but we're on the revised schedule, so costs in schedule are up. Quality wise, Mark runs a great team. Soderstrom's documents, you know, when you buy stuff, the old Sears, good, better, best. We tried to buy better when we could afford it. We never get to buy best in the public market. But, but better means your building should perform better. Life cycle cost should be better. Your exterior skin and those systems should last longer. And in relationships, this one has been tough because we ran into so many financial challenges. I mean, I mean, we spent over a year trying to balance the budget. And I don't think John shared that with you, but the team found a way to reduce the cost by $7.2 million. But it took months and months and months to do the best. I agree with John, it's an exciting project. The students are gonna appreciate that building and that site for decades to come. And we'll let Hoffman provide their comments as well.
So John and Rick described the, you know, after we, we got to a scope and we started to buy out, awarding all of the subcontracts for the work, I'll kind of start there. So where we are with that now, almost all of the work has been awarded at this point.
That we're gonna buy right now.
That we're gonna buy. Yeah, you know, it's so, yeah. There's a, one of the riskiest parts of the project as we're getting into it is how much is it gonna cost if they put a market and buy for it? So that is all either established in committed alternates in subcontracts or it's awarded with the exception of things that I'll buy, you know, by cleaning small pieces. So 99% by value of the work has been worth. So there's a huge risk of any construction project that's already or beyond that. So when we talk about cost certainty going forward, that's a great place to be. And some of the other risks or costs that we identified getting into this thing is that the salt rock in this area can be super challenging and the unit was super challenging on the middle school project with the district. So I was proud of this team for being open to, we put together a really good plan to attack that work with, you know, the almost certain assumption that we were going to come into the salt rock, I think, admitting that without impacting schedule. And this team was, was really supportive of establishing rates and all that. And we've said by default we're going forward. And what these guys alluded to is we've now pretty much, for the first phase of work, we've done all the deep excavations that we're going to do. And we were able to, to do some chain work for excavating solid rock without delaying the schedule because we had the rates established with a good plan. And we, now being through it, we've just only maybe not half of the work satisfied. So that's a great win. The unsuitable soils that they mentioned, we're little of that. We didn't go over the budget that we said I'd drive you there. It's a little bit more work, but that's coming in the next phase for sure. But yeah, the deep excavations, the most worried about. So then on getting into the buyout, we heard you guys, the community involvement in the project is very important. So we, around our first bid packages, we hosted a local contractor outreach. And we got this out by advertising in papers and even Mark.
He's been. He's been writing flyers.
Well, I did it for boys, yeah, he thinks. Papered the community, the hardware store, the print shop, anywhere where contractors frequent.
And next all the cars at the restaurants, like the cozy.
Yeah, that's where we're at. There's this car. And you know them. I, I received so many calls, oh, what's the details on this? And, and, you know, we get through that conversation. Where'd you, where'd you hear about this? Oh, the Cheryl Williams guy, this flyer. So it was great. And, and so we hosted that event at the high school in the building D Commons and had great turnout, really good discussion. And I really enjoyed meeting all of these contractors that I hadn't worked with before, building my community of contractors that I can use going forward. And we've been able to award two and plus a sub-tier, very significant scopes of work. We have, you know, our excavator, ZM excavation, and our steel, I mean, this isn't a big structural steel job, but we have a really good sized steel scope with LBH Construction of St. Helens. And we'll be engaging specific teams too, under our vision.
And you picked up a local engineering firm for some of your civil work.
Yep.
LCE.
Yeah, yeah, so on our team also, under Soderstrom's direction. It's LCE. And then, yeah, aside from that, we're buying everything that we can when it comes to pieces, parts, services, toilets, fueling from local. So it's been, it's been fun to do a lot of that.
One thing I'll add on the local too, like, probably at least a third of our workforce is from the accounting, you know, maybe not well taxpayer. There are a good handful of taxpayers in the St. Holmes School District. You know, I have some of these staff who's right here, Prescott. You know, it's, there's quite a legion of crap workers here. We're getting quite a few of them that get work close to home near a change. So it's been fun to see. You can, you can tell they're, they want to do the right thing too. It's just sometimes you get some crap workers, hey, I'm here for my paycheck. You know, here, you know, we're here at middle school for St. Holmes. So it's been, it's been fun to see that too.
They are singing every time we go.
Yes, they are. So I might jump on that too, just with a little bit of construction update. But I might echo one thing real quick too. And I know I've had the opportunity to tour a lot of you in the room through the project at different times. And I get to kind of be the face of what's actually happening now, happening out there. But when John describes and give Marlene and her crew credit too, I mean, it's the whole collaborative effort. But this, the school's being transformed. I mean, you, people that have been, that have gone to that school for years and years and years, they're gonna walk in and it's gonna go, whoa, this is different. So I think that's kudos to them. We're, you know, it took a while to get there, to get to a start date. But, you know, when you're gonna walk through that front entry and you're kind of at the hub of the school and the cafeteria is kind of staring at you in the face a little bit, it's, I mean, it's, it's gonna become alive and feel a lot different than, than what it used to over there. Kudos to everybody on that. So kind of a quick construction update too. I mean, everybody can see some of the progress, you know, from the street there. Like mentioned, the majority of the dirt work for our first phase is complete. The majority of the structural work for the first phase is complete. And then we're, right now, we have more ductwork, sprinkler pipe, electrical conduit, and things going in the walls and ceilings. We can count right now. And another big thing that we're doing also is the exterior skin systems. We've got roofers out there, we're putting our exterior wall membranes on. We're getting ready for some recast and brick to show up here, windows. And, you know, we're getting into the dryer months. And then we'll be into some of our finishes as we get into the summertime out there. That's all tracking well. I think the one big schedule item, I think everybody's aware too, that we did have one kind of major schedule update that we had to do last fall due to some long lead electrical equipment that we have for the project. So, you know, we're tracking on schedule till we got that little pit, which kind of pushed us back. And then as we were revising the schedule to accommodate when we are gonna receive that too, you know, it was actually a lot of input from Scott and his team, the high school team over there too, that really, you know, we're, we're on an active high school campus. And you can't move on a Thursday in the middle of May, you know, type of thing. So there was a little bit of give and take of when are we gonna complete this? Or when are we gonna move in here? And really try to fit, you know, when we're getting done in certain areas with how does high school community functions too. You can't just up and move a whole art classroom or a science classroom over a long weekend. So kind of worked through some of that and came up with our revised schedule.
Yes, we can.
Ben, there, there you can.
I'm just gonna take everybody in this room then. So, you know, the revised schedule that we did come out with that we're, we're working on right now, we are tracking to meet those milestone dates. So definitely have good progress for that. You know, we always have our ups and downs. You know, we're a little behind on getting some skin on, but we're a little ahead on where we're at in some of the MEP stuff. So, you know, kind of working through those kind of things right now. But, you know, the overall milestone dates are definitely holding from that revised schedule that we put together. Kind of where we're at right now with construction.
Thanks, Mark. Marlene, do you want to give some architect update?
Yeah, so first of all, we really enjoy getting to continue to work on this project. It's been a very rewarding project. We, we put in a lot of time and effort, Andy, who's not here tonight, and asking who have been working on it essentially since the beginning of COVID. It sounded interesting. They're very passionate about the success of this project and the work that they've done for the district. And a huge part of that, this table represents the team that the district has hired. But I think the people that work at the district have represented just a tremendous effort to give us the guidance and the timely responses that we need to make the project successful and move it forward. So from a design standpoint, that's a tremendous part of our regular meetings and checking in and kind of trying to get the tools of what is, when to be the best result. As we move from paper to kind of brick and mortar, there's always shifts in what we know and what we learn. We have to be adaptable, we have to be able to kind of make changes on the fly as much as possible. And in doing that, we really need to try, we always start with what's best for the students, right? I was gonna say kids, but what's best for the students? That's always the starting point. How can we best maximize the existing building that you have? Fix the things that need the most fixing the best way possible and be as true to the budget as we can, right? That's kind of our guiding principles. So we've had tremendous support from the district with that. And then working with Hoffman and Cornerstone and all the other partners, Lower Corby Engineering has gotten to partner with the local format here, which has been great. And then as much as we can, even our printing, we've been doing locally too, which has been a real partnership, which has been fun. The design itself, it has not changed in principle, right? The kind of overriding goal, our safe campus. We're trying to improve wayfinding and organization of the building so that when you walk in, it's very understandable and it's very clear. We're getting rid of the mazes as much as we can. I think most everybody is pretty familiar with the program pieces. I'll try and go over them very quickly in case, maybe there's some people listening that don't know. But we are talking about creating that new front door, right? And that's that kind of speaking to giving that student experience. We're creating a safer campus through secure glazing, kind of the whole entry sequence and the entry process is gonna gain improvement control. The parking lot access as far as picking up and dropping off pedestrians, cars, buses, trying to improve that as much as possible. Actually improving the communication inside the building with the fire alarm, intercom, kind of some of those communication infrastructure pieces. And then something that's critical, I think, to everybody, including the students in particular, is creating a safe environment for all-inclusive restaurants, right? Sounds like it's kind of weird to go out and make the list, but that's something that was really identified as important as far as the design process. We still haven't been building any new science classrooms, right? So modern classrooms, the cafeteria commons, it's already been mentioned. Those accessibility upgrades for areas that were, that were not designed to be accessible are gonna be upgraded. And a refresh of the existing spaces as far as finishes, fixtures, lighting. And then one of the biggest impacts is trying to connect all the buildings together, A, B, C, as much as possible. And creating a secure environment with that perimeter that will keep the people we don't want in out, right? And that's still allowing students to circulate. That was obviously really important. Building C again, some more kind of refresh and modernization. Again, working on the accessibility and the connection to the rest of the campus, upgrading restrooms, and then the mechanical improvements. And then building D, we're looking at restroom upgrades and hard work.
Wyatt, yeah.
That was Wyatt.
This one, okay.
Well, he can give you a firsthand reference that he, he did see it today.
Did, did get to tour today. Well, appreciate the panel and giving your update. Again, one of the reasons why I asked them to join us is obviously because we have a bond. And I know you're hearing lots of questions from the community. So I thought this would be a great time to ask our team here some questions specific to the construction of the high school that you're hearing. You know, the bond pieces, I can try to answer for you. But I think this would be a great time for us to kind of start that Q and A type. So does anybody have a question for our team?
Yeah, of course.
And whoever feels that they, you know, you can.
I'll just throw this in straight at Marlene, but. Well, I, I'm just watching and waiting and seeing what's happening with the entry. How closely does the entry now reflect the drawings or the images that are on the website?
That's a great question. Right now, there aren't any significant revisions to that image.
It'll look at least similar.
It'll look very similar. We're, we're working with some logistical issues in the connection in the front between A and B. There's some, it has to do with the fire rating. So there's gonna be a little bit, but that's, that was always sort of kind of secondary. And we were trying to kind of make that area not highlighted in any way. So we will still continue to try and do that. Otherwise, right now, we're on track.
Good.
I'll throw out just a little bit, part of the scale, you can feel it a little bit if you drive by the front of the school. There's a large piece of tube steel out there that's kind of the, each edge of what that, in the height of what that new entry is gonna look like. So, you know, there's gonna be a lot more to it and break in the, you know, St. Holmes High School and those kind of things. But gives you a little bit of feel for the scale of the entry versus the rest of the building area.
It's really cool, and we worked really hard on it. And I just was wondering how, had that been valued to a typical high school front? Or is it gonna stay looking like that? How many people can fit in that cafeteria now, at least projected? What do you think the cafeteria capacity is? Do you have an idea?
That involves math. I do believe we had it designed for two lunches. So I can get back to as far as what the.
With tables?
Yes, with tables and chairs.
I was reflecting to Mark today, it depends on who picks out the chairs.
And some of those massages?
No, 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 well, we, no, we got, we got into that where 450 capacity turned to 300 because the wrong people picked out the chairs. They were, they were larger capacity folks. And, and that's, that's fine, but that's ended up, it was a big surprise that we had all these chairs that just wouldn't go in the room. So.
With the cats I've been doing, we're still using round tables and new chairs, which takes up the most space and is like the least dense. So that, and then that's what you want for kind of that community. You want the kids to kind of base each other where they're eating. So there is an opportunity, if capacity becomes an issue in our room, to potentially come up with a configuration where the tables take up a little bit less space and you can maybe do a few more to examine. But right now, we're trying to design it to kind of maintain that sense of community.
Other questions from the board?
My questions are all like, I'm a 12th year high school parent, like for 12 years that we'll have kids in that high school. So, so mine are like, all the crazy questions. Like, why can't we use those fields right now? And why can't we get into the auditorium? And are we gonna have the air conditioner next year? So even graduation is coming and the access to the, the parking lot? And when are we gonna have some of those more important things done in the terms of where we drop off our kids in the morning? And the easiness of being a parent and our kids feeling comfortable and everything like that?
That's kind of like a timeline question.
Yeah. Yeah, like, come on!
As an older sibling of someone who will most likely go to this fully renovated high school, I also have questions about timeline.
high school, I also have questions about timeline.
I'll take a stab at some of that too. And part of it is tied into kind of where we're at with this long lead electrical equipment. Essentially, we gutted the entire mechanical electrical system that was originally built in the 50s, the original 57 build. It's completely gone and getting replaced. So with that means electrical switchgear and other things like that. And all the components that are new for the building, like the fire alarm system, you know, the egress system, all those kind of things all require that power to make the building function. And that's not only just in the 50s build, but in the 80s build when they did the auditorium, the oxygen and all the other things to get that connectivity back there. So there is some options that we are working on to try to get some access back in the school as far as the gymnasiums go. I've been meeting with the city officials. Life safety is always the most critical thing. We never want to put anybody in the building without it being safe and be able to safely get out of it if there is something happening. So I've been meeting with them on that and, you know, sharing those, you know, what the options are with the district and, you know, high school community too about, you know, if we spend this, we can maybe do this, if we don't, we can do this. You know, there's still a few things that are floating out, but our, our current goal right now, the kind of the path that we're trying to steer into is to get some access back to the gymnasiums for this fall, when the school year starts again on that. When we start looking at trying to do some things for the locker rooms, the auditorium or even the new cafeteria space, the cost to temporarily make those safe for ad occupant is extremely high and adds zero value to the overall project at the end of the day. So, you know, we've been working as a team on that, trying to find the right approach and, you know, they're most paying their buck. As far as some of the other parking things do, when we can't occupy a building, we still need to keep some controlled access to, so that those things hopefully will have some, some good changes for some of that possibly by the start of the next school year or two. As far as the fields, I think I heard that comment or question there too. And we're not really impacting the fields with any of the construction work that we're doing other than kind of nip off the corner of the softball field temporarily for an access path. But, you know, they fenced around that to keep, you know, the main varsity softball field contained out there. But and then we did just complete like we, one of the upgrades we did was for the baseball field. Got the new outfield fence in, we had to kind of nip off the corner of that for the new fire lane and went in last year. So hopefully those, that baseball field is a little damp out there still, so hopefully that'll be playable soon, get some more sun. The other fields work is all been scheduled and kind of coordinated with the district and things for mostly phase two work, especially with kind of where the bonds add now too to actually, you know, did want to go put the new JV softball field out on our corner of the field, if there's maybe opportunity to do something different. So we kind of all collectively decided as a team, let's keep that in the phase two work so that, you know, we're not impacting anything out there that might be a change type of thing. I hit some of those, hopefully all of them.
I'd still put the fields out there and park over at the recreational area of the district. What about the auditorium or sorry, not auditorium, but choir and band access? Will those, they seem to be moving right along really quickly.
Also tied into the whole new electrical mechanical systems that are cut off of the new electrical service that same year. So, you know, we're probably going to have a lot of areas that are pretty much finished, ready to go, we can turn the lights to come on and the roof to come on, you know, fire alarm to come on.
You can have the whole thing ready to go and just no electrical. It's, it's the way it is.
Part of what kind of pushes it out a little bit too, not only are we delayed just receiving it and then we have to install it and, you know, there's a lot of things that happen as you're getting a building ready to get turned over as far as the, I mean, your flushing pipes and, you know, running HVAC equipment and you have to change filters out, you're commissioning it and balancing so you get the right airflow. So there is, it's a months long process to actually build through all those steps, especially in a building that's, I wouldn't say complicated, chopped up, there's kind of different things, there's just a lot of different zones in how the thing all has to act together to show we basically have to prove that the building's safe, that not only ourselves, but the building officials, fire marshals and all those kind of things before we can put occupants in there.
What's our projected time again for that switchgear?
Right now, and it's been one good thing, it's been since we realized we had a delay in that about in September of last year of 22, it was a ship dating November of 23, and that's been holding steady, all the updates that we get from that. Unfortunately, I haven't seen any progress in pulling it in closer, but it hasn't like pushed out another three months or anything like that.
Anybody got any wood to knock off?
He tried.
There's nothing here, no wood. I don't know if this is real or not, but we'll go with that.
Other, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question because I gave him this job. When, and I'm going on the positive, when we pass this bond, do you get hopefully the extra money? And even if we don't, I'm going to come up with it, is to repave that whole entire parking lot, especially over by the dance courts. What I want to know is so that we don't find out a year and a half from now that the asphalt costs even more than it does today, is there a time period at least, maybe let's say by the end of August, that things that are all in the parking lot, at least from the tennis court over and all the way out to Gable could no longer be located there? And if nothing else, at least get that all asphalted, but the brand new asphalt before football starts in the fall and people are parking in the pot holes again in the back part, you know? Or even at least that part back there would be an improvement all by itself. I know that means moving things, I don't know where you will be in the building parts of what you have stacked over there at the moment, but is there any possibility that we could maybe do that at least by the end of August?
As far as the construction side of that, I think that is all doable type of things. There will have to work with the district on, we're still going to need some space as we're finishing things up, but, you know, most likely once structure is done, skin's on, sidewalks are poured, parking lots paved, our footprint can definitely shrink from back to now, we're just moving things inside the building to be able to do the completion. Of course, I think there is probably a budget component though too, to make all of that happen and that we need to get, get solved to pull that one off though too.
Yeah, I think the, the biggest piece is when we pass the bond is as a board, we're going to have to look hard and do some prioritizing because, you know, shared, here's what we could purchase with the additional money and then we'll have to select what we will purchase. And we'll have to get updates too from our team, here's where we're at. And then as a board, we'll make some decisions.
What you probably can tell though from my question is the asphalt's a priority for me.
So as far as utility, infrastructure, you know, any, we're not going to be tearing it back up again, those kind of things. So the summer would be the right time to do some of that.
So taking both weather and, and cost wise, hopefully.
And unfortunately, the cost of asphalt, it's, it goes up one month and then down the next and it's all, and part of what Brian mentioned too, is we're kind of trying to buy risk into some of the subcontract too. So we did, it's not just an unknown of what it's going to cost for us, we're actually tied into like an ODOT rate or our painting contractor type of thing. So it's unknown, it's not just, oh, hey, by the way, it's more, you know, there's a lot of thought and effort put in to try to, especially if the price is going so high so fast and to control the escalation or at least have it known so we know how to calculate it and it's not making it up as we go out there for one where we are buying certain portions of work.
Yeah, ODOT sets those, those rates for the asphalt price. So you are right, early buy-in now might be better than buy-in in a year. You can go to that website all day and see the trend. And there was a large spike, you know, six months ago, or maybe it's more like a year ago now. And I was expecting that might correct and it just hasn't. So it came up and it leveled, but yeah, it's, it's definitely unfortunate.
I know some people think of it as excuse making, but I wish I didn't own how much things were going to go up, I'd have bought carloads of OSB. And so, so I, I think, you know, people say, well, we did have enough money to do this project without going out for another bond. We had, and do it very, very well. But if anybody could have predicted COVID and could have predicted all the things that have happened and, and the doubling and tripling of costs, I, I don't think there's any expert in the world that, that could have done that. If they did do that, they're extremely rich because that's just the way that it is. And so you're doing a great job with the resources that you've been provided. I think we're, it's very evident, but the fact that yes, that was consumed as everybody else has seen and that we need a little more money was, is pretty evident if we want to get everything that we've put on the list. We'll still not get everything we put on the list, but we'll get much closer. And, and so we're giving our people an opportunity to choose if they really want those things and that they can get them on a two for one sale. It's a, it's a bargain in, in that respect, but that's still a decision that the voters have to make.
So my, my question is, what happens if we see in the next year, another event where prices skyrocket? What will be the first to go? What, what in our list of long things that we have to do to get this project finished and ready? What will be among the first to go?
Great question. You know, in order to do this job well, you have to plan for when things go great and you have to plan when challenges come along. And so part of the buy additional scope plan that we've developed as a team means we would maybe fall back to good, like some of the finishes and some of the existing building, we'd like to upgrade every finish in there, ceiling to floor. We may not be able to do that, but we can paint and make it better. So that's one piece. I don't know, John, what other, other than, I don't know, I think some of the.
I mean, one nice thing that kind of Brian touched on a little bit is we've locked a lot of pricing in because we bid it all at once and we're building in two phases where we locked much as we could into pricing. So I'm sure we would see some things go up, much of the majority of our bids are locked in for us to, you know, add to the scope. So I think possibly we're, we could see costs go up for some of the bid alternates, but you need your price, but Scott's kind of moving to just going back out, you know, maybe some deal of work that rode in different scopes that may go up. Some products, turf products or things like that, but we have it locked in that, you know, we would go out for revised pricing on them. So I think for the majority of things, we have got it on, right? So.
Yeah. You know, construction is a business that we usually have trends. We have spikes every once in a while, but more predictably we have trends. You know, we're working in six districts right now. We try to bid a lot of our work in February. And, and so the bids that we got in February, the outcomes are changing. Two years ago, we were all begging subs to bid, just so that we got some form of competition. And for the most part, with the ability to rebid when we need to, you got multiple bids and decent pricing. We've bought, we have a price, the most of scope you want, it's set. But in the last bids, we had in some cases, eight subcontractors bidding on two quarters ago, where we, we get two, two years ago, we were satisfied. As we are buying low voltage contractors in other districts, in Canby, we use an R and P to go out to market, we have eight contractors, low voltage subcontractors. So the trend is good. I always tell clients, we're one world event from everything changing and, you know, so far, because those, as you go as well, but, and you should know, we are a hundred percent supportive of your bond and are really excited when the bond passes that you're going to be able to buy some scope that's going to make some big difference for the students and staff in this district.
The other piece to that, cool point, is we do have a contingency built in. The hope is that we don't have to use those contingencies and we can possibly use it to add scope, but we have to keep it there in the event that something does happen or.
Such as our emergency funds.
Exactly.
Yeah. And, and the contingency, as we talked about, things that we anticipated might cost more have cost less. So our contingencies at this point of the job are, we're very comfortable with them now, so we feel good about that.
What percentage are we at with our contingency fund?
Sorry?
Do we have a percentage?
Percentage?
For just emergency.
So we are about 15% of H and B, which is pretty good considering. And what I explained today, where the majority of those are, we had some permit revisions and then the schedule change of the parking lot with the long lead item effect. So really, if you take those things out, you know, actual items in the field and the dirt, they haven't been, not gone a lot of wood, it's been pretty good so far. So our, our burn rate is less than the amount of wood that's been used. And we have two contingencies. We agreed to a contingency in their contract for certain things and they haven't used much of it. We kept a contingency outside the contract, we call it the owner's contingency. Have you used any?
Not, not officially yet. I think, yeah, we're going to dip into it a little bit for the first time, but we're, we're still in pretty check.
So there's a high probability, just to support what Scott said, that we get to use some contingency to buy scope, which is a wonderful outcome for us all.
I wanted to say, well, but two, I think one of the questions was, you know, if, if something happens, what's going to get cut to you? And it's not, the project is complex enough, there's never any one independent thing that we can say, that's it, you know, break. Every change in scope, adding or deducting has these kind of spider webs of connections to the rest of the project. So if we have to do something like that and we're looking at a change, so we're going to go back and look at the entire project holistically. And again, just be like, okay, now we're at this decision point, let's look at all the things that we want to have, ensure our priorities, right? You know, how much of that list can we get through, right? And then is it still in the right order for what we know right now, right? So I think it's, it's one of those things that until you're there and you know where the project is, what we've learned in the meantime and what our goals are, that will change. But I think one of the advantages and the momentum of having the team here on site is that we've done many versions of those designs of what is desired. It's already been permanent in most cases, we're ready to go with it if we are able to get the funds to do it. So there's an incredible efficiency with the project already being underway, like that momentum, you know, the cost of getting some of that for a small project versus having somebody already there and just be like, hey, why are you there? You know, let's take care of this. So this bond, I think, is that last piece that's going to really be a very efficient way to help supplement the majority of the work that's already under contract. So I think that.
So to, just for the voice of experience here, back in 1980, when they did the brick portion of the high school and they got all that going, and then as you get down near the value adding, what got left out was the science department. And I was very aware. And, and so it's their turn. They're going from 57 to 23, but that's different centuries. So I, I think, you know, but that's the way that it is. They got, they worked on their major scope and got the shop buildings built and they got the art building built and they got building B built and they did a wonderful job on all of those things, added in the things that they really felt were necessary. And then they came down to science and we did a little bit of painting and cosmetic and, and I, I actually stole the old. And I actually stole the old library and came out pretty good on it, but the rest of the guys got left in the dust. So it's just the way that it turns out that sometimes the budget ends at a certain spot and somebody says, well, gee, you need to put in some kind of off-site mitigation or all kinds of creative things that people can spend your money doing. And that's the way that it was. This time, the science department in that area, the older portion of the building is getting the new portion first. And the other parts will still be, the science department was better when, it wasn't just walked out and left. They, but it, there was, you know, the effort was put to where the new construction was. And that's kind of what you're doing with your first phase. You'll, you know, then you'll see balance your budget and see where you are. But it was a great project then. I can tell you one of the benefits that was just start to me was the behavior of the students for the next five years after it was put together was astonishingly better. That had been, they'd been crowded, they had been, when you crowd up people or animals or anything, it's a little bit uncomfortable. And Mel can tell you. But the kids took pride in their school and it was just, it was just nice. And I think that you'll see some of that today. I think we've seen it in other parts of our school district where we've put in that renovation. So it's, there's other social benefits to this that are, that are very real. And I think that it's going to be a fantastic facility for our community.
So kind of on that social benefit, the exterior, you know, you drive by everything every day and, you know, see the movement, you know, see people working. So actually, that's an impact, people, like are they doing anything there? Is anything happening? When do you think you'll start to see some of that exterior come to life?
Right now, part of the skin system, we've been working through, there's a lot of recaps on the skin. And just to get that coordinated and into a shop. And right now, as of sitting here, it's right about first week of June. And that really keys in most of the other finishes on the exterior, the way the sequencing has to work on that. There is some opportunities, working with our Mason contractor, we might go start some of the brick. Some of the other lead items, you know, it's not just electrical gear, it's other things. Our window systems, like our aluminum, they didn't write at their shop and helped made. So even the window systems, so some of those things have been, you know, the electrical gear unfortunately takes the highlight, but there's been quite a few of those supply chain type issues of trying to get some of those things onsite at the right time too. And we do have some wins though, kind of some things that you don't see out there, like our air handling equipment that was a risky thing when we were buying that out too. Those air handlers are onsite now. We're working on the roof, getting the roof dried in, so we get curb set to actually get them up where they go. So we are getting a lot of parts and pieces coming together. And so a lot of our risk is being minimized. I know every day that goes by, we, you know, start checking one more off the list type of thing.
So with that being a challenge to get the outside showing, you know, the windows and, oh, gosh, there's windows. I agree. And if you look at the web camera, the web camera doesn't show too much. Maybe some regular video updates that could just go online that we could share. And I know Stacy can do that or different people. But we've done a couple. But I was, as I walked through today, I just noticed that, gee, there's some significant growth here. And it'd be pretty cool to see some, you know, regular video updates. I know that Ed tells me the cost of plugging cameras around is not as cheap as it seems. So some of that might be just kind of a...
I think we can get Stacy to update it and put it on the website or on the front so people can see it.
Yeah, yeah, just, it's just one of those things that I'm just seeing that, gee, what I saw today was pretty exciting, but nobody else is very excited about because they just see an orange building. Maybe you could have at least made it lemon and black, for heaven's sake, but no, no, he has to make it orange.
Was that one purpose?
I'm glad I didn't say that.
So for the most part, the board has been very gracious with their questioning. But I want to, I'm hearing things in the community that I want to throw at you guys. So I've jotted down some things in mind and if you can, you can pass if you don't want to. So first thing that I hear, you built a middle school and you built an option school for $49 million. How come you can't remodel a high school for $60 million? What's the deal?
I'll take the first shot and then Brian can add to it. So when you build a building onsite and there's nothing there other than, you know, dirt you have to deal with and stuff like that, you don't have to pay for demolition. You don't have to pay for hazardous materials abatement. And those costs on the project we're doing have been significant. When you do a new building, most of the components for new buildings, a lot of it can be off the shelf. So you don't have to have as much manufactured. Everything we're, we have a lot that's being manufactured specifically with the building. But the biggest answer is, we've had some years of 10% inflation, you know? And, yeah. And so what that means is just the cost of material, you know, when you add 10%, like even for a $40 million job, right? If it went up 10%, all of a sudden it's a $44 million job and stuff like that. And I think Brian can share that, that inflation has been a huge challenge for us and a big cost in the past.
Yeah, not knowing the other projects, to know if size is comparable or what. That's, that's where I would say the answer is, is the timing of them. And similar timing, I think, to when this, this bond was first developed, estimated, I think, 2019.
Yeah.
So we've seen the impact of that now.
So I think the follow-up question that I hear from our community members is, okay, so then why didn't you just build a new one if it's cheaper? So I guess, what's the cost to, from your experience? We know we're 60, 70 million, we're open to the bond passing. What would it cost to build a high school brand new from the ground up?
How many square feet is it?
20 is where I'm probably.
225, 250, 250, 250. So right now, we're buying new construction for about $400 a square foot. For just the building, for just the building foundation, sites, you know? Sherwood High School, the site was 8 million bucks. So what's...
90 million.
90 million.
90 million?
90 million. So you're still, yeah, it's still less than a new school.
And that's in parking lot, that's how. We get this question on and I ask, if you were to go back in time and buy a house at the time when we built the middle school, would that cost the same as if you were trying to buy a house now? And all of the construction projects you're dealing with, all the same stuff that the presidential, like the smaller projects you're dealing with, it's just not a bar.
I built my first three-bed, two-bath house for $12,500.
What about the buyer's remorse right now? Would you expect for things to keep climbing? Or like, should we be waiting?
They're not going to go down, but I think they're going to level off. So I don't think they're going to grow at the rates they have in the past, which means we're approaching a good time to buy. So when your bond passes, we'll want to get right after it because it's a good time to buy comparatively, right?
So really, we're at a good place, I mean, in the way that we started for others.
Just kind of another comparison, a project we're working on right now, so kind of more real time. It's a new elementary school, just 73,000 square feet. The total project budget there is about 40 million. So you can kind of say, well, three of those, it could be 120 million from the square footage we've got. So it's, it's just gone up so much. When we were estimating probably, you know, about when we started this, we were at the 350 to 375 a square foot. And then the estimates just last, round of estimates were 500 to 525, you know? So it grew so much in a quick amount of time that it just wasn't, you know, predictable.
So I'm also, I'm always asked about change orders because anybody that's done any type of building says the change orders are going to eat you out. So how do we manage? What have we done? Where are we at with change orders? I guess, what's a change order if somebody's listening?
So when you're building construction work and something changes for an unobscene condition or in positive, you invite something additional for the project and there's change, something that alters the construction documents or the base of the project, that kicks off the change order process. And our process has been very good and not delayed as good. Every change order exponentially handled and everything's great. And we have, so the process, when a change situation is known enough that you can push it through subcontractors to price it, and that's step one, subcontractor price. Comes through. Step two is they submit me the pricing. I'm negotiating with the subcontractors to get the price to the right place and lower than we give it in the first one. Step three is the, it's where I need it to be, it's packaged and it's in for a design team, project management team, district review. And then it goes through and it goes in the owner's hand. And right now, we have things in every one of those categories, every step of the process and the flow is going, is going well. And it's, I mean, it is, it is a part of the process, particularly in a renovation building. When you're going to take something apart that you couldn't take apart before and then there's something mine here that we need to now change our approach in order to construct to that existing thing. And it's not, it's just, it's just a part of the work. And it's not, it's not a bad thing, it's what we have to do and see for. And, you know, we're glad they're there so that we can, we can use that to perform our work. But without the change process, the whole thing comes to a description call. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's just doing work.
One thing I think that's good for the project and the project team that sits here, I mean, most of us sit in on the cost meetings and things like that too. But, you know, the full CMGC project for us as the contractors, everything is 100% open book too. So Brian mentioned he's working through with the subcontractors, what that pricing is. Whatever that piece of paper is, that's what is John sees, Marlene and her team sees, Scott and his team from the district sees. So everything is right there, wide open as far as, hey, this is what changed. This is the man hours, you know, this is the material cost, you know? And all of that is 100% open information, just the way the whole process works. And, you know, we've kind of established and evolved a little bit since the project started. Just, you know, we meet once a week with this group and we go through what's new. And then we also go through, like, when something's brand new, we bring everybody's attention. It goes through the pricing process, when it's ready to package up, it goes through the next process. And it's all tracked, every last dollar that goes through that process is looked at by every member of the team that's sitting here today.
I think the change is one of the most important aspects is to not waste money, right? That's what people are always thinking. So HOPF is doing a tremendous job of staying ahead of the process, right? And when something does come up and raise our attention, usually it's not the proposed solution. And then we have enough time to evaluate it and make a decision on how we want to proceed with it. Worst case scenario is we replace a floor, we have a new concrete slab, oh, we missed something. We now have to tear that slab up and redo it. That's just wasted money, right? So those are the things, when you're trying to manage change, those are what we always strive to avoid and never even have as an option because we're working very diligently to stay ahead of the process and make decisions quickly.
Well, I think we've had you for a little more than an hour now, so I really appreciate you guys. Any final questions from the board?
I have a couple.
Okay.
I like to throw that out.
I'm like, I have one too.
Now they're coming, all right.
From a financial standpoint, because I'm usually the doom and gloom budget guy. In your recent history, have you ever seen costs go down to the point that you could buy something now or you can hold on it and then try and do something again, let's say, five to 10 years? So in the last 10 years, have you ever seen a state of place where, gosh, if we don't do this right now, it's going to likely go down?
I haven't seen the cost of material go down and seen them stabilize. I have seen the cost of labor go down in the past. For example, that when companies are full, but they're looking for some work that they could do on overtime, that adds 50% to an hourly rate. Right now, there's more labor than work. Two years ago, there was more work than labor. And so I think the only thing that's predictable is a potential slight decrease in bid cost. The hourly rates, you know, the hourly rates are set by the state, you know, prevailing wage and stuff. So that, it may be that we see some more competitive bidding from a labor perspective. But, you know, we worked with a lot of contractors over in the contractor's office last week and they're varied. So if you're in the right markets, K-12 right now, there aren't any huge bonds, well, Portland and Beaverton. But they're, you know, Gresham is done, the old Rosson down and stuff like that. But I wouldn't predict any reduction in cost if you win.
When you look at materials, you know, those things in a market like that, they're fairly up and down, right? But if you look at a 10-year period, definitely, but even a five-year period, the trend is almost always up, no matter what five-year period you're in right now. But with those spikes going, we even, we even had an experience on this project where we're building lumber spiked majorly. And just the timing of everything, buying this job, we got to see that correct. And that's, but that's a short-term deal. But we weren't able to buy over and end of that. When for a while, we were quite concerned about the lumber costs.
And it sounds like the lead times, so you're still seeing a significant lead time in some things, but you've seen maybe a smaller lead time than expected in other spaces? Is that what I heard?
It depends upon the product. Yeah, it depends a little upon the product. I wouldn't say I've seen shorter lead times, but some parts are more readily available now. But we're getting through at least for the first phase here and procuring most of the materials and/or have commitments for when we're receiving those. So some of that risk is, you know, it dwindles every day that we go live. And then with being a phased project two, I think we've been, we've pretty much bought out most of the materials and things for the second phase. So there's some materials we're going to end up storing on site, you know, for phase two and then others just storing in their warehouses. So since we've already bought that, you know, accounting for most of that. Risk keeps getting less and less every day of long lead materials.
And because of the phasing and the lead issue, you haven't really been able to move into other spaces just because of the occupancy, correct?
Mostly, yeah. Mostly, yeah. The, the high school community's been very, um, I'll say disrupted by this project. Just the amount of space that they're taking up, um, on the construction here and having classrooms and modular buildings and things like that. So it's, it really starts coming down to classroom counts and, you know, working through the phases and how many classrooms, what has to happen for the next phase once we do like the building B classroom remodel. So there's, there's a lot of kind of behind the scenes just to make sure that they actually function and, you know, what rooms I have available and forecasting, forecast, you know, talking with the principal, you know, they're forecasting in January for the next fall and things like that. For what teachers we have and what spaces they're in.
That leads-
Trying to do that, you know, short-term change is very difficult for that, the high school community.
That leads right into mine is for the second phase, how much of an occupancy in building B will you still allow? So the-
There will, right now, it's currently planned that all of the classrooms are gonna be taken out of commission for the second phase.
So we'll have new classrooms in A.
New classrooms in A.
So the, the students will be enjoying some new areas while we're finishing up.
So the portable school will maintain through the longevity of the whole town?
Yeah.
Uh, so what exactly is the plan for students to get around the construction zone in building B as they pass from building A to the portable buildings?
Good, good question. Um, the kind of the big picture logistics plan that we've come up and been working with the school on. You know, right now, like students are coming from the backside of the building, the B, C, and D from the parking area. That's where we're gonna do our construction for B is coming from the backside. And then the front parking lots will all be open, the long parking lot alongside the auditorium will open up. And then we'll probably be using like the fire lane and kind of come in the back doors of building B for that second phase. So unfortunately, students are gonna have to go around building B to get from the modulators to the new front entrance and things. But that'll be done on the front of the building.
That's not really going around though. That's just going from the modulators down to the front entry.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, it's-
It's essentially a straight shot, yeah.
So the final question I have is, uh, so any time you pass a bond, you know, could immediately see the proceeds of that. And I think right now there's a lot of conversation about what that bond might purchase. And we've heard a little bit about the ability to reprioritize or to, um, reshift kind of how we've got things going. I know there's a lot of significant concern about baseball fields and softball fields and those types of things. Um, is there any ability to reshift priorities into some of those things to expedite them versus having them come into the latter stages of the project?
Two years ago.
You know, what we have done is, you know, currently, uh, HOPF has got some scope for softball field. Probably held off on that till we can see if the bond passed and let's prioritize. And we've started to engage, um, few companies that we've used in budgeting and pricing.
Sixty-six, sixty-five.
To form them of a project where if we were to go that route, we've had a head start on that.
That's what he's talking about, cycles.
See if some of that works. So I think that would help.
Yeah, I think the answer that we want to give is yeah, absolutely. But the reality is, as we continue to build things out, we could be planning for, you know, a, a beautiful covered area outside the cafeteria. That may be low on the priority and we may end up needing to spend more money on HVAC and that may go by the wayside. But if we put that up first, then we wouldn't have money for the HVAC priority. So it's, it's a juggling piece. Um, it's, it's, it's a really tough situation. But part of that is just with the phasing and when you're doing construction on an occupied school. We, we didn't have that issue over here because, right, we finished construction, kids were in class, then we moved them over and were able to fold those, so.
I do have one final comment. I, I'm sorry. I know we want to like move on with the rest of the agenda here. Um, but with, harkening back to my comment earlier, um, you mentioned that students would have to use that sidewalk along Gable Road. Uh, would that not be considered a safety hazard for these kids?
Good question. I probably need to clarify that. It's not the actual Gable Road sidewalk. It's the sidewalk adjacent to the building.
Okay.
There is some reconfiguration we're doing with the front parking lot. So it's not pushing, that's a good question. And we're not, um, the logistics plan that we have that we've been working through doesn't push them on the Gable Road sidewalk. It's the internal sidewalk on, on property.
Okay. So I've got one final question and we-
We've heard that three times.
We, we have, this is it.
Is that all?
Promise, promise.
No worries, no worries.
So I see this bond as an opportunity for our community to make a choice. Do you, do you want to finish this project and add some of those things that we dreamed and hoped about? Um, or do you want to say no, district? We gave you a shot, you finish it as is. So I guess I'll point it right to John. And I get this, I get this when I'm in the community. So you need to pass a bond to finish that high school. And I think people have envisioned if the bond doesn't pass, which we hope it does.
It's gonna stay with orange paper.
That it just stops with, yeah, orange, yeah, pre-planned, orange walls and two-by-fours wrong. Can you clarify what, what really happens?
We, so we've managed it to where that wouldn't happen. So, um, if, if the bond were not to pass, we would at that point group up the team here, district, and we'd have to look at that second phase and kind of, uh, rebalance the scope of the budget. With, with the budget we have, kind of rework the scope that we'll be able to do. So we'd have to change, uh, the current scope to balance that out. Um, but we, we still have funds to do somewhere in that second phase. It just wouldn't be exactly the plan we have now. Um, so, uh, but I guess, and I was gonna kind of put that out earlier. One thing we always strive to do on projects that we manage is not overcommit the bond, which you see sometimes in other, uh, districts.
If we need another hundred million.
Yeah, we never, so we just set it up to where we only committed a certain amount. We haven't committed over the total bond amount. And then if we need to, uh, adjust and kind of regroup and, and re-scope, we'll do that. So obviously, we're really supportive and helpful if the bond passes so that we can kind of take the other direction. But if we need to kind of recalibrate, we'll do that too. What I would add to that, it's gonna be a good project with what we have right now, okay? It's gonna be a better project than when it passed. And it, and I, I, I think that's an opportunity for the taxpayers to say, I'm, I'm willing to invest a little bit more in our students. And it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's not a big slice of pie you're asking in terms of dollars or cents or thousands.
Right. Well, and the, the great thing about it is we've got a four million dollar matching rate that's already secured. Um, we've worked it so we could, if, when we pass the four million dollar, um, bond, the tax rate is estimated to stay exactly the same. And the length of the bond is exactly the same. So it's not gonna, not gonna change the rate that our current taxpayers paid this year. Um, it'll be the same next year if the bond passes. And frankly, the way we're able to do that is, um, over the last couple of years, the community's grown. So the distributed, right, who's paying the, the tax of the bond because the bond number stays the same, um, our community's gonna keep growing and this tax rate is gonna continue to go down. So even though we're saying it's two twenty-eight this year, it'll be two twenty-eight next year. Whether, you know, if we pass the bond, the following year, in all likelihood, it'll continue to drop as the bond gets kind of spread. So what I, I feel like we're in a great space for our community to take advantage of a unique opportunity.
Right, we agree.
Any other thoughts from our team? Thank you so much. I kept you a little bit longer than I anticipated, but it was good stuff.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six hundred students, in the cafeteria. Six hundred students.
Six hundred.
Over the front.
That's, well, see, that's a number I've been using and I, I, I was just pretty quiet when you said that, but-
I was trying not to be speechless because I'm like, don't hurt me.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I swore we had that minion there.
So ate lunches, uh, so early morning gets first lunch and, no.
But actually graduation, that's our graduation with parents.
Marlene, I, I had a, a contractor friend that was building a house. And, and so I asked his wife, I said, well, what style is your house? And she said, well, it's somewhere between early siding and late tar paper. And if, if you know other contractors, you'll find that that's probably true.
Thank you very much.
All right, and it's still daylight to your cards.
All right.
Anything else on the topic here, even though they left? Does anybody need answers?
Any more final problem, any final comments?
Five point three.
All right. Okay, no. Well, then we will. We'll move on to five point two, the ELP curriculum resource adoption. My turn, I'm going to go.
Well, we're gonna have Kristen and Dan come on up.
We hope that you really enjoyed that last part.
Yes, please sit there so you can speak into the mic. Martin, come on up as the teaching and learning, one of our teaching and learning leads. So as part of our process of gearing up, you know, for years, we didn't have a curriculum adoption cycle. We've reinstated that as a board and budget committee. Um, you've committed to funding it and part of the funding of that is funding our PLA, English Language Arts, but also funding it for English language learners. And these are our two experts in the field. And they're gonna share a little bit about the curriculum materials that we're looking at or planning on.
Hi, I'm Grace. I'm here as a member and I'm the ELP curriculum coordinator and teacher. Do you have a question?
David, David, you're a teacher.
Okay.
Martin, you're a teaching authority.
Um, thank you for adding us to your agenda tonight. We really appreciate it. Um, we are super excited about our curriculum adoption because it's been a very, very long time since we've been able to adopt a new curriculum, um, in our ELP department. So, um, one of the exciting pieces that I want to lead off with, especially on the back of that conversation, is that, um, we have this amazing opportunity to use group funding, um, to purchase our curriculum. So we're super excited about that. Um, I have a couple of pages that I'm just gonna pass around and take one if you want. Um, first, just give some facts about what we're looking for when we look for a curriculum and then what we've found in the curriculums that we reviewed. And the second one is just our rationale for it. So, um, first of all, we started with the list of curriculums that have already been reviewed and deemed as meeting OBE standards. And after we went from that list, we ordered samples, looked through various curriculums. Um, Danielle and I both had some time to look at them and see the student components and teacher components. Um, and, and then we got together and kind of solidified what we think really is gonna be best for our students here. So, um, the things that, well, the top part was, um, the things that we were looking for. I'm just gonna highlight a few of those as kind of like the most important. Um, alignment with the English Language Proficiency Standards is number one. Um, instruction that's designed to meet the needs of students at all proficiency levels, but then also differentiated within those proficiency levels. Um, we have, you know, all levels from level one to level five. There are five levels where I define English language proficiency. And so we're teaching at all those levels. We want to make sure that we have materials that really will meet the needs of all the students regardless of their level. Um, we, of course, we're looking for curriculum that's culturally appropriate for diverse learners, uh, multilingual and multicultural. Balanced design with instruction across all five language domains. That's reading, writing, listening, speaking, and metalinguistic awareness. And so we want to make sure that we choose a curriculum that is hitting all of those and hitting them in a balanced way and not just focusing on one domain over another. Um, student engagement. Some of our former curriculum is not highly engaging to our students at this point. And so we were really looking for things that were gonna be current and engaging for them. Um, and then also with that as well, having current and digital components. And, um, that'll be really important as we move forward to ensure that we have the materials that we need for the longevity of our, um, program. Uh, as well as a solid instruction on grammatical and language structures, of course, because that's for teaching English. So, um, we have two separate curriculums that we'd like to talk about tonight. First is the newcomer and that is a Vista publication. It's called Get Ready. We actually looked, so we looked at all of them by elementary, um, middle and high school. And what I thought was really funny was that we looked at them separately and yet every single time we felt that that was the best choice. So that was kind of cool. It's a similar, um, setup and it just feels like it's going to be really user-friendly for students and for us as well. It's solidly aligned with the ELP standards. Um, it does have a wide range of instruction on phonics, grammar, conventions, language, um, and language in action. So there's like academic language and then there's language we use daily. And you are gonna hear with your peers and things like that. And so we want to make sure that it has both of those. Um, it has a really cool cultural note that helps students make connections between English language and other languages. So it can help them, um, to draw those connections and better understand English moving forward if they can figure out how it connects with their own first language. It's balanced across the language domains and it also has some really awesome content connections where it's building that language in the content areas, which is of course super important for our newcomers as well. Our newcomers are, have such unique needs, especially, um, when we get newcomers more at secondary level. That's a really good challenge for them. So really helping to break that language down and give them practical language instruction and give them what they need to be able to function, um, you know, in their daily life with peers, but also in that context. So, um, the second was our core curriculum. And again, we looked at all of them separately with multiple other programs and we came back to the Sendage, um, which is like a Nat Geo, um, program. So, uh, elementary is, we can start and retire middle school's impact and high school's life. Uh, this, again, tied to the ELP standards, balanced across the language domains, strong instruction on language and phonics and grammar, um, culturally diverse and appropriate, and really well differentiated with visuals and organizers and things like that throughout the curriculum. So, um, that's where we are with what we were looking at. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things.
Can I just throw one, and just another acronym here, but ELP. I see ELD because you spelled it out on the next page, but you want to just throw those out for our general population?
Yes, ELP is English Language Proficiency Standards.
Okay. And ELD is English Language Development.
And ELL is English Language learner.
And SOL is English, uh-
Sorry, I don't like.
There's been so much.
Yeah, I know.
One thing I would like to, um, because I, I did ELD before and I've now come back to it. Um, the first round, we didn't have curriculum, the second round. It was welcome to your job and go ahead and make it, uh, go along.
Yeah.
And when I left and handed it off to the entire place, by the time we, they were able to actually get some curriculum, um, they don't make the consumer. So it's using what we have because we can't find anything else. It's not, there's not really a digital component. Um, and the pandemic has forced everyone to go digital. There's not that piece. Um, the content that we've looked at, they have an answer for that. We're looking at a seven-year, um, commitment. And even if a digital component changes, they assure us that there will continue, at least for seven years if we buy that. Um, that part, which is what we're hoping to do, that they have guaranteed that there will be materials for students to use. Um, another thing is there's not been a lot of diversity in the content. Um, some of the secondary is, is six through twelve and it's one or two books. There's just not a lot of differentiation there for students. Um, the elementary content that we use is really good stuff, but the topics circulate for the next five years or six years. So while the language is the, is the proficiency levels increase, the language changes with the, the content, the topics are all the same. The topics are all the same for five years. And so it's the weather and ecology and the school. But it's kindergarten, and it's the same set. And then first grade, the same content. The topics are all the same. There's not a whole lot of change. What we're looking at would give us specific things for each grade level that then change as they go through the grade level. So that if we do happen to have a long-term language learning, they're not gonna keep seeing the same thing over and over again. We can have more opportunities for them to see different things. So hopefully, we can keep that one year or so. Oh, great.
Does it coincide with their non-ELL students, like in their curriculum, so that they are maybe learning say Oregon Trail? Is there a component that allows a side-by-side curriculum?
Not exactly.
That comes more into like with the ELP adoption. What we were able to do with the grant money is there's low-level readers. And so the company that we went with, Rocco, you can buy one, get one free, right? Above readers. If we bought a low-level, we'd get the on-level for free. We bought the above-level, we'd get the ELD for free. So we were able to use that, kind of shift the money around where it's coming from. So we purchased the ELD using the ELD grant money, the low-level readers. And that goes along directly with the on-level readers for the ELP adoption. So the students, every teacher paid by is gonna have an ELD book for the low-level readers. And their on-level readers, that are English speakers, are gonna be reading the same book. It's just that the ELD students are gonna have those extra embedded scaffolds in the book. So that comes kind of from the materials that we're adopting as core for subjects.
Another piece, I think, is that the curriculums that we have chosen do have specific other content variables that we're supporting. So there is science units that will help us to pull in that science language, social study, and math. The other piece is as the district goes, goes this RTI model, where they're picking their essential standards, and those pieces become public, that we can really team with the teachers and cherry pick those pieces of our curriculum that will then also support them. And we'll have more to cherry pick from.
And my role in this is I sit on many teams with teaching and learning. But I'm immersed in the different material adoptions that we're doing right now. And so I'm trying to support our ELD teachers that aren't doing this kind of work with meeting the reps, going through the quoting process, and then looking at the actual quotes. And making sure that we're not only buying what we need, but also projecting the future, but still being fiscally responsible, even though it's grant money. You know, we don't wanna just sit there and spend money to spend money. That's irresponsible as public quoting. We're kind of in that process of making sure that we have.
Martin is a master negotiator, and he's always getting a little bit extra for us. So we appreciate his skills.
Twin needs you. The next time, Twin buys a car, can you go with them?
Moving on.
Actually, I was thinking of saying you guys working on the high school for that.
Mr. Stockwell? If we teamed him up with Joe, we could just roll him on.
Yeah.
It's a very exciting opportunity for us, though, to be looking at some newcomer curriculums because we currently have six newcomers in the district, which we really haven't had in larger numbers before. And I know six doesn't seem large, but in our population, it's pretty significant. And not having anything to meet those needs definitely poses a specific challenge. So it's very exciting to have the opportunity, not only to get our core curriculum, but really to find some things that will be just that much more beneficial for our newcomers directly.
And we need something to support them other than speaking louder and slower.
Turns out, that's not how you communicate.
We are working this. We have to have it before June 30th, which is why we're coming tonight to the regular board meeting. Because there is, there's a timeline that we have to meet. Otherwise, it goes on next year. A lot of it's for grant money. If we miss that, so we're trying to fast-track everything as best we can so that we can take advantage of the current allotment that we have versus the schedule for the future. And if we lose that amount of money.
And we're in such a unique position right now because of the long cost of the district. This is fully funded to a grant. Grant, and if we can do it now, then we can, the next, the following year's grant money, we can put towards other things that are smaller chunks, because curriculum is huge costs. And so to be able to do that and not cost the district anything, if we can get this process done in time. And the publishers of that are pretty confident. They think that if we get this done in time, we'll be back.
Because we're also here behind. So everything is published already and available. So we're not, that way, like we are on base construction where we're running into supply chain problems.
For clarification, when you're saying like grant-funded, seven years of curriculum grant-funded this year?
Yeah, it's a seven-year digital license that we're looking at for all the digital components, and we're also buying the print components as well so that we really, really truly will have longevity, even beyond that seven-year point. And just so that we have that, you know, variety of instruction. But yeah, the seven-day license as well.
The most, so what we're, for the grant, we have to spend by June 30. And anything that we don't have spent, it goes back to OD. So it's all OD.
True.
We don't want to. But we're at a point right now that with the board approval of the curriculum we hope to adopt, that all the pieces that we put in place, we've got the, we're working on currently the pre-order just in case. Everything falls, like we've tried to do all the steps we can to keep the process moving forward. So it is ready in the near future, if we can, a week or two ago. So we can pay for the back grant money. And still have it all taken care of. And it should carry us to seven years.
We're hoping to have the final board by Friday, so that Monday we can get it in, I originally started the ELD process. Hopefully, maybe by the end of next week, Lori or whoever can push the approve button.
Do we have any timelines that we need to put out for review?
It already is out for review.
Okay, so we're already on target for that?
We were trying to really plan every step. And if there was any that we could double up on, we were trying to do that.
So we'll fill all of those timelines and be able to.
Can overtime open Saturday speed up the process whatsoever? Doesn't matter. Okay.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you guys for all your work on that.
Kristin, Daniel, Martin, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We really appreciate this. We're very excited about it.
Thank you, us too.
And thank you for being patient.
Of course. See, that was really important stuff, too.
You got to learn all about the high school, that's right.
That's right, you got here a little bit early, too.
And we're all about it.
Okay.
On the regular board meeting. It's happening.
Okay.
See that? I'm excited.
Thank you.
The work sessions tend to be where a lot is done.
Yeah.
Our young people are discovering that, boy, there's a difference between this and a regular board meeting, where they go, yeah, 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 done.
We've all worked 12 hours with you. Right on time.
Wyatt knows me. I was pounding nails with him this morning.
Hold it back, I gotta tell you what number you are.
Five point three.
Yeah, remember that five point three to support for National Skills USA, editor, Mr. Enos.
So I just brought up the question. Wyatt is a state champion and has earned the right to go to National Skills USA. So Skills USA is a little different in that it is part of many CTE programs curriculum. But everybody goes to state. It's, state is much like what we would call district, where everybody goes to district. And if you win district, you get to go to state. And if it's, one of our athletes gets to go to state, even if it's one and it's down in Southern Oregon, we pay their freight to some degree and for their culture, their transportation, whatnot. And so at Skills USA, and we've had a few students that have done that. One of them is Richard Sasse, I think, that was plumbing for us the other day in a meeting with us, and he was a national winner as well. And he placed high at Nationals. A lot of it is just experiential for the kids. They get to go and they get to compete with other people and get the exposure. There are schools that spend their entire curriculum around the competition. It was true in automotive, too, that they didn't fix other people's cars. They just practiced problems and troubleshooting. And that's all, that is their curriculum. And so they do very well at Skills USA. We have had some pretty good mechanics place. I think once we did have a winner in mechanics, but often they're second and third because there's just some school that's really worked hard at that, and that's all that they did. It's true here, too. Wyatt is involved in R and R and the skills he's learned there. And then we have a couple of days that we took off for practice and doing some stuff for Habitat for Humanity that relates. And I know Mr. Parsons just talked to us about, he'll get us some help with steel light metal framing because that's a skill that's at Skills USA that we don't typically use. But we're gonna try to get some hands-on for Wyatt with that. But, so my question was, and tonight isn't, you know, we never really considered it as a, we don't have all the details of cost. From Mr. Mock's estimate, that a student and advisor would be probably under $3,000 to go to Nationals. There is an entry fee for him, but it's basically a plane fare and a motel and then some meals. But whether you fully funded that or partially funded that is, my question more is, what message are we trying to send? But we also have to be very careful that somebody wins a solo contest. I know Caleb auditioned for my grandson for a national thing and drummer Buick or, and as a drummer. But he's paying for that because that was completely outside of the school activity. And that's just not, I don't, that's different. But if it originates from within the school, then that's another thing. I know we send groups of kids that say, well, we auditioned and we got to go to the place. There again, I'm not sure that that's quite the same. We send those kids to state and they can win their state championship and they can do those things. Anyway, it's just, my question is for the group. And I'm kind of speaking for Wyatt, but it was me that brought up the question. I think that it would be something that you, we could either discuss now or you could consider now. I wouldn't make a decision now. I think he needs to come to a regular board meeting, and it could be an actionable item at a regular board meeting. There's time for that, I think, on the 26th or 27th, if you choose to do that.
Does that get him in touch?
What's that?
To have it organized?
Well, I mean, I think at that point, he can have a formal request in. I just got this information, as you did, off the internet. And we find out that he's done this. And so I called Joe and asked him, and he said, well, let me see here. Let's see what we've spent in the past and what we've done. And there'd be money, maybe money and, you know, some help in R and R or his own family. But my questions now are, it's kind of a question that's somewhat formative for not just this year. We've got three girls this year that placed fourth, fifth, and sixth in state. Two of those are coming back next year. And I think probably have an idea that they'd like to go do this, too. So I think that there's possibility. Anyway, I just, that was just, I just wanted to present it. And then you, Mr. Stockwell has some ideas.
Yeah, I think it's great. I participated with VICA when I was in school. So now Skills USA. I think it's a great opportunity. I am mindful, though, I think we need to go back and look and see what we've done in the past. I think about our robotics program. You know, how did they fund themselves back to Nationals? We've had other students go back. I think the board action would be giving me direction on looking up both in the past and how we could better support Wyatt and other students. And maybe even coming up with some criteria that would make it something that, yes, this is what the district supports, and this is what the district still supports, but we can't fund it. Because like you, you know, you pointed out, your grandson on the triumph of the national drum corps not connected to
School.
But somebody may try to make an argument, well, I play drums in the school, therefore, the school should. So I think we need to have maybe just some guidelines on how we address that recommendations. I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope if we have the board directing funds outside of the budget process. But absolutely, you know, giving me direction. Mr. Stockwell, you need to see how best to support students that are successful like Wyatt's because that's what we're trying to do. You know, there may be some SIA dollars that we could look at, but I think we need to kind of hone down first.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, it's a work session, and that's why I brought it up here, is because it's time when we can have conversation. And I know that we did help robotics some. I know that other school districts that are much smaller than ours send their robotics team on a regular basis to world competition. And so different ones. And we also have changed some things that we do with our fee structure and how we, how we support athletics and those things. I think, actually, our program probably just paid the fee structure for entry for him to go to state. So how do fee structures work into that? I mean, we've changed for participation. This isn't a huge amount of money in this case, but it could be a huge amount of money if you have a.
Choir make Nationals.
Yeah, I think that's not there, but there may be some other activities that have three or four kids or something. It's even, it's different for club wrestling and club volleyball and club things. Those are club activities, and the parents that have their kids involved in that understand the economic cost of it. But, so anyway, I just, I brought it up and I would, you know, maybe you guys want, Mr. Stockwell?
We can entertain here for to our budget session. We're cruising through and work with it and entertain.
Yeah, this, this could be something, too, that we look at for, okay, we're gonna stick a little bit in for, in the future, in a budget, so that it's there. I, you know, this, this doesn't, you know, maybe that just brings it up to a point where, you know, we have certain even groups, like the choir, or the band, that are gonna travel, that maybe we don't have to pay the whole bill, but we can do something to say, hey, this is a thing of merit, and you're gonna gain some stuff, and maybe your family can help, you can fundraise. It's a little hard to fundraise pop cans for carpentry, but.
We know business owners, Wyatt, so we can maybe help you out.
There's people, yes, there's people that will help. So making it, making your honor, there are people that would say, yes. I mean, I help kids on a regular basis, and so, because we do have businesses and we have the ability to do that. There are other, and there are other businesses that would do that. So it's not a singular thing, but I just think as a board, not everybody has, not everybody has the opportunities that Wyatt does. You know, there are kids that definitely, this would be an answer of yes or no.
So in general, my position is, we fund athletics.
So in general, my position is we fund athletics at a significant rate because it is sponsored by the district. I don't see much of a difference if we are sponsoring the same type of behavior and activity that is strictly on the district's programs. We have a process already that we have that people solicit for those trips that the board can take action on. How would this be different?
This is not an OSAA sponsored event. So it's not part of the state association. So it would be like your. No, I think it'd be more, it'd be more like your, our rodeo club.
So.
OSET. OSET, yeah. And then, you know, it's, it's connected, but it's not.
What about band and choir for national travel? We do the same process for them. We all fully pay for it. I'm not saying, I'm saying there is a mechanism in which we do pay dollars towards those trips and it's presented as a.
It's not individuals that win a competition. Because yet, so for the band and choir, that's, that's their choice. It's not a competition. This, the students, you know, want a place to go and it's essentially, it's an invite. So it's, it's, it's different. It's not connected.
So I'd like to see if you.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we're having the conversation.
And that's why I said we need to, to develop a policy and program. And I know your support. And I'm super supportive too Wyatt, congratulations. We're excited for you. It's quite interesting. Very cool.
These are the things that make our district unique and speak to the roots of the community and how we build up our community and our students to be college and career ready. It demonstrates just how important those particular things are. So I'd like to put our money where our mouth is.
At the same time, because people are watching and there could be other people that want to vacuum, you give a little bit of information what National Skills USA needs or encompasses. Not everybody watching is going to necessarily know what you're referring to. So since you've hit us up all night long.
I think maybe this could, Amos or Wyatt would be the sort of.
Yeah.
Yeah, he thinks Mr. Enos could be.
I think Bill could do a better job.
Well, so it used to be the VICA club, I think would have been what it was. And it was in a, pretty much an after-school activity at that point, although we do it within the classroom. But Skills USA is for kids in career technical education. You can do it through culinary or you could do it through welding or you might do it in auto shop or carpentry. There's many areas that are technical skills that kids have. I think they even have it now in computer science that you can be. And so there are statewide competitions for students that, to compete against other students and inspire them to work hard, get, get the training that they need. And then for the state winners, they're invited to go to a national competition, whether it's in Tennessee or wherever they have it, Louisiana, they have a national competition. And it's much, much bigger on the East Coast. So you'll find schools from East Coast that their whole shop program is oriented around precision, doing these things. And, and it's, it's very competitive on the East Coast compared to, the West Coast has many other things that people are doing. So it's different here, but at the same time, we, I think probably, Richard was probably the best carpenter there, but they threw a Dutch hip at him that he had never, didn't know what one was. Everything else on his construction was top notch all the way too. And so he was right there for a top 10 finish. And, but that kind of puzzled him for a bit. He had, he figured it out, but you know, figuring out things like that on the fly are a little tough where other people practiced it because.
It's time to.
Coaches, and it's time, yeah, you get, so you were one of the first ones done, weren't you?
Definitely so, yeah.
Yeah. And his measurements were more accurate than the competition, which proved to be worthwhile. So those are just things that we have. But you know, the competition is build this wall and get it framed and to whatever specification and plan or, and then cut rafters and cut stairs. So things that a carpenter would do, the nationals, they also have steel studs and framing. So there's a few things added that are going to add to this repertoire.
Have you had him out with the guys that are building there?
Well, the good news is that he's clever enough to figure out what he has to do and get it done. And that's, that's a help. Anyway, I just wanted to bring it up and we could discuss it. And I don't know, I don't know that we need a motion. I think you have a sense that, that we would like to have a little guidance from our sagacious leader.
Yep.
And, and then that way we can kind of have an idea what's fair and we'll, we'll figure out how to get some more information so that you have, it's nice to have hard numbers.
Sure, at the same time, I still don't get like a date or a timeline, like when does the, have the Sam coming and when is the competition?
Yeah, well, that's pretty important that we may make that decision with or without you, but it's unfair to the second place finisher if we fool around and then say, oh, by the way, you could have gone. I, I think that that's discouraging. I'm not in that.
When is the competition?
Uh, June 19th to the 23rd.
Yeah, something like that.
So that's relatively close. So if we're gonna like make, take action on this, we should probably do it here soon.
Yeah, next, at the regular board meeting.
Would be enough at the next.
I don't think this requires a board action.
Okay.
You can make a board action if you'd like. I think you've given me some direction and I can pull together and.
Might you do some homework? There may be some finding within the program, other things that are there and, and let's do our, let's do, let's do our homework inside.
I'll reach out to Mr. Mock and get some background information and figure out, I'll talk to Katie and figure this out. We'll keep, we'll keep this in track.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's an honor because it doesn't happen every year. I think Richard was the last one and he was like five years ago, six years ago. Then there was somebody before him, oh, Malvin, I think also might have been, if he wasn't first, he was second, but he was right up there.
All right, well, then we'll turn to 5.4 to Jessica so she can go to bed pretty soon, right? The business report and then you can just keep on going.
All right. And I'm on the same time zone as you guys still, so you know, if I'm going to bed, you guys should too. Um, Christie, are you showing slides or would you like me to present from my screen? Awesome. We will.
Can she be any louder?
Can you turn it up?
Okay.
Well, your bling works good.
They have to project, Jessica.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi. All right, we will, we will flip through these. The all items were provided in the board packet for your review. First of which is the summary from, you heard from John earlier tonight, but as part of the bond project, they conducted an RFP for security and access control. Similar process for what we did when we built Plymouth High School and the new middle school. So they received two proposals and based off this tabulation of scores are recommending or requesting the board acting as the local contract review board award the contract to Reese Complete Security Solutions. That total contract is $221,508. That will be my, it's our first item. Our second item. While Christie pulls that up, it's going to just be a summary of the board agenda item we discussed in January when we talked about our board, our audit results. So that is just an update that we give to the state in their prescribed format. So that will be a report that Melody will be asked to sign as well as Scott. And as we discussed back in January, all of those items were resolved over the summer of 2022. The next item is going to be. One screen is so tricky, so spoiled with two hours of the time. The use of our permissive cooperative agreement. So historically, the district has contracted sub finder services through the ESD through specifically a technology consortium of three ESDs. They have transitioned from offering that service, which left the district in a position where we could either conduct our own RFP, which is pretty technically demanding and, or we could look and see if there were other pre-existing agreements that we wanted to piggyback on. Or the ESD also conducted their own program. Just in looking at the available providers, the district would like to request that the board give us permission to enter through a permissive cooperative agreement with ESS West. They have, and they answered a solicitation that was conducted by David Douglas School District and several school districts in our region also use this agreement. This is specifically, as you might have read in the explanatory memo, this organization already has a presence in the Portland metro area and already has a pretty significant sub pool that the district would like to leverage. Our teachers work hard. And now when they need a sub, we want to make sure we have adequate workforce to fulfill those requests. So we believe that ESS West would be the best partner to do that. Next item is going to be another RFP. So the board gave us permission last year to continue our pre-existing arrangement with Polly Rogers with the promise that we would go out for RFP this year according to board policy. We did that and completed that RFP process. We had two responses after tabulation of scores. The district would like to request that we could engage Polly Rogers again for three more years. Thank you, Christie. Yeah, I know you're doing great. And that total contract for the first year will be $53,460. A lot of school districts are going out to RFP for audits and not getting any responses. And we were very fortunate to have two people reply, just, you know, the change in auditors' responsibilities and the significant kind of accounting pronouncements that local governments are implementing. It's just really affected the pipeline of auditors. And so we just feel very fortunate again to have two people propose and have our prior team re-propose to work with us. And I believe that brings us to our final item. This isn't specifically a board action, but you know, we're just always trying to build out our processes and our documentation. And so the district business office has put together DLC AR. This is an administrative ruling that supports your board policy and really just codifies our business practice and supports our internal control practices that we, you know, carry on as we process transactions for the district. But this puts it in a format that's accessible to staff and the community member or community members so that they can understand specifically as we comply with OGEK requirements or, you know, if staff are looking at potentially doing some district related travel, they have clear, a clear understanding of what the district will and won't support. A lot of the travel requirements are specifically necessitated by our receipt of federal awards. And so again, we're just always trying to build out our document library as we have time. And so this is a big project that we're excited to check the box off of. So with that, that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Acronyms.
DLC AR. Is that specifically what you're asking?
LCRB.
Start from the beginning and work your way down.
All right. Local Contract Review Board.
Yep.
High School. ESS is, I believe their literal name is ESS West. So an RFP stands for Request for Proposal. And then DLC, DLC is just the assigned code that the OSBA model policies have assigned to our expense reimbursement policy.
And then the AR is an administrative rule.
Correct, yep.
Just, I mean, education, any business, any education, anything is just full of a foreign language of acronyms, but it's, it's nice to know what, RFP is real common if you're in the construction world, Request for Proposals. Anytime you want somebody to bid on something, you, hey, give me a proposal.
Yes, I care. Sorry, sorry.
Okay. Come on, Mel. Five, five.
Shorten everything.
Yeah. Well, then let's just get going and we'll come back to all that stuff in a few minutes on the action items. Now turn this over to 5.5 to our superintendent.
Yeah, I think that we need to have an action item to add the ELD to, or somebody needs to move to add the ELD curriculum, resource materials added to the.
Should I move or modify the agenda?
You mean the ELL or the ELD?
Add 7.4, 7.5?
That are you saying ELL?
Say ELD.
Now we just check and make.
English language development or ELLs.
Okay, thank you.
We're in an ESOL program. Shall we continue with?
Moved in second and to add a 7.5 to the action items to approve the ELD curriculum resource adoption. Did I get that good?
Beautiful.
All those in favor?
All right.
Very good. All right, so we got that, Christie?
We haven't voted for you. Yeah, we just put it on the agenda.
All right. Okay, now we will go back to Scott for anything else that you want.
Yeah, I wanted to touch on enrollment. And then I've got some slides about the bond that I think we'll show, but I'll go pretty quickly. You guys have seen them and are aware, it's just more to help keep it out in front of the public. This I think is interesting. We're trending compared to last year, we had an influx in students. So if you look at our daily, our weighted average membership, right? That's when you take in consideration the additional way you get for an ELL student or a special education student. That's down a little bit. This though is actual student volumes, right? And so here we're up, and you can see in March, we're up by 22.7. How do you have a point seven student, a student who's absent half a day or quarter of the day? So it's tracked pretty specifically by classes.
Christie, were you hearing that box from the chat?
Sure.
Let's throw this one out.
Yeah, so you guys see the, kind of see the trend, the year to date change, but at the bottom, just specifically focusing on March, we're up by 22.7 and all the way over, we're up by 18.4. I'm wondering, and I'm going to have to drill down a little bit more, if this may be a little bit of the beginning of the apartment at Broadleaf opening up. I know people are beginning to move into town. We're seeing some unique changes so people can qualify for those apartments. So that may be a bit. I don't though anticipate a large influx because our understanding is most of it will be folks within our community that are.
Just moving.
Moving, maybe living with family or couch surfing, moving into becoming sheltered. There will be some folks though coming from our county and a few from the Portland area. So I do anticipate some growth, but I don't anticipate hundreds of students maybe doubling that.
There's also some growth in talking with the Realtor yesterday, talking to our students that the market is softening at the high end, maybe a little bit. that the market is softening at the high end maybe a little bit. But at the family, beginning family level, anything under $400,000 is not staying on the market for 30 days. Currently, and which is really pretty remarkable. If you, if it's livable, it's sold. And so there's families still moving from the Portland area. Something opens up here, they can't wait to get here. So you'll start seeing people transitioning into the area in our more, I guess we could call them affordable houses, but affordable for Portland folks at least that would come in.
And that's something that we're really trying to keep an eye on because the Broadleaf apartment complex is an affordable housing development. We may have people who are living in our other apartment complexes moving and qualifying, and that will open up and create a vacuum. So then people from outside will come in. So we're watching that. I think this may be a little bit.
Two hundred and thirty nine seniors?
So.
Kind of like the junior classes, the, yeah.
I would have to, I would have to look, I could find out and get, find out.
That's pretty interesting, isn't it? I mean, everybody's over 200 from sixth grade up.
And I don't know how much effect it actually had on our community, but one thing to remember is in another year, as the beginning of your pandemic, they'll be starting to arrive and the preschools are going to start to mature. So you could see some growth. We'll have to wait and see. I know that it's been a real issue for a lot of parents. There's not enough childcare for them, so whether they all stayed in the area for that reason. But they also could start showing up for that.
Sophomore juniors and seniors have never been in high school and now. They don't look like they're getting an.
Looking at the the total change. Now, if it was a, if it was a big change in March, it might, might be students graduating early, but it's not. It's starting, it started at two forty four and now it's two twenty nine. It was a pretty big drop, it looks like, in January.
From February. Oh, I see tomorrow. Okay. So year to date, though, it is interesting that if you look at the changes at the high school level from freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, that's a, that's a concerning trend to me, that it, I don't think it's all just.
No.
People moving.
And we do have our junior classes, interesting as well, because it's small compared to the others that sandwiched me. So I guess the question we should, we should be asking is, what can we do better at our high school to nip this in the bud? I think that's one question ahead. I think that's a great question. One question ahead, but I think we're definitely getting to there. Well, we need to find out what's, what's.
What's the cause?
Going, what's the cause before we nip it in?
Yeah, we're looking at the effect and not necessarily knowing the cause.
That's, that is the right question to ask.
So, yeah, the question really is, what is the cause of that trend?
You know, and there were, just to let you know too, there is a big time period and we would have to ask the parents or the kids. There was a time period between just my freshman year and my senior that different businesses shut down and quit, and they happened to have the older kids and they had to move away for jobs. So sometimes that's all that happens here in our town, too. It's just for jobs. It'd be worth it. It may be certainly part of it anyway.
Yeah, no, definitely some of them will go. Any other questions or thoughts?
It's interesting that some of those trends are year long trends. It would be interesting to graph what's going on there in that spreadsheet by class. To see as this seasonal move in is generally happen in June and September. So there's, there are trends that are there that, that I think we can, we can definitely investigate it to. I think it's, looks worthwhile. The good news is we're picking up students.
Right, right. But we want to, we want to retain students. That's good news on both ends. This is ballot language. I want to share it with you. This is what people will see on their ballot, and I think it's, well, you may not be able to see it. But I've got, I've got it, I've got it in front of me. So the question itself is, shall the district update, repair, high school issued $4 million in bond, receive $4 million state matching grant, no estimated tax rate increase? So that's, that's the question upfront. And then the summary, and I think it's a pretty good description of what we're trying to do. And that's why I wanted to share it. In 2020, Sanlans School District received voter approval for projects to update, repair, improve security and modernize Sanlans High School. Demolition is complete and construction began on new classrooms, commons, C T E learning spaces and auditorium. Project costs have escalated due to COVID restrictions, supply chain issues, inflations resulting in inability to complete some planned improvements. District receives vote, voter approval to issue $4 million in bond to complete project. No expected increase in existing tax rate due to assessed value growth. One on for one state matching funds, if the measure passes, the district will receive $4 million in matching funds. Projects to be complete, projects to be completed. Then it lists some of the options. And then at the bottom, bond may be issued multiple series, 27 years. Current levy rate of 228 per 1,000 assessed value is estimated to be maintained. So hopefully, when people read that, they'll feel that we're being reasonable and not reach out and stretch. So can you go to the next slide? That's just the highlight that, yep, we're number one on the list to receive $4 million with the passage of a $4 million bond. Next slide. This is a video that I thought would be good to watch. It's relatively short, and what it does is kind of describe at the end the situation that we're in on how we can slide in a $4 million bond without increasing the tax rate because it distributes to everyone in the community. So can we go ahead and run that? Hopefully, the volume's.
As election season approaches, you may hear talk around your community asking for support on a bond or levy. You might ask yourself, what exactly does that mean for my household? And if property values change, what can I expect? So let's start from the beginning. What is a tax rate? The tax rate is used to calculate the property tax that a property owner pays. In the case of schools, when community members vote on a school ballot measure, they are deciding whether a set dollar amount should be collected through taxes. The tax rate is simply the amount of money that needs to be collected for each $1,000 of total assessed valuation to reach the total dollar amount that the voters have approved. Here's how it works. Let's use Tiny Town School District as an example. The Tiny Town School District has four houses, and each house is assessed at $100,000. The district held a Tiny Town election and voters approved a $1,000 bond or levy. Because property values are the same, each household pays the same amount to reach the total voter approved amount of $1,000. Now, let's say that the homes in Tiny Town are reassessed, and now the homes have increased in value. Home A is now valued at $200,000. Home B is valued at $150,000. Home C is valued at $200,000, and Home D is valued at $250,000. Because the assessed values have changed, each house now pays a different amount towards the bond or levy. However, the district collects only the total amount that voters approved. No matter how much the property values change, Tiny Town School District is still only collecting $1,000. So what happens if more houses are built in Tiny Town? Well, more property in a school district means more owners are paying a share of the bond or levy. The total bond or levy amount is divided among more property owners, meaning each property owner pays less. However, the total amount collected for the school district remains the same. To learn more about property taxes for bonds and levies, visit your county assessed.
But I think that there's a really nice job of quickly explaining the situation that we're in. We've had more people move in. The amount of money we, that we've asked from our voters stays the same. So it distributes to voters what each person pays. The thing that's important in Oregon is that Measure Five locks or holds down artificially home values. So people may have purchased, or their home may be worth the sell at $500,000, but the assessed value may be at $300,000. And so when we're doing those calculations, what is it going to cost? We need to be mindful of what our assessed value is as opposed to what our market value is. A little bit different nuance. You go and go to the next slide. So question I get a lot is, how is it going to change? And that's why I'm trying to share this. So this is from Piper. Jack, where is it? Jack, I think they changed their name. Piper. It's our, it's our company that goes. Did it listed on there? No. Anyway, this is the company that puts together our bond package, does the calculations. Last year, you can see in 2023 or this year, it was $2.28 to pay for all of our bond obligations. Next year, it would be $2.28, and you can see that it would be a seven cent change. So next year, it's projected that our bond rate would drop to $2.21. So we're sliding in seven cents there. Then, after twenty, twenty six, it'll drop a little bit more, and we slide in another five cents. It will continue to drop, but they just project what they feel will fund our bond. So there's not going to be a change in the rate. It'll still stay at 228 unless, which I would anticipate, our community to continue to grow. So just like we're able to find that seven cent, 13 cent sliver, which if you multiply that by a home of about 300,000, gosh, I think it comes out to, is it 40, $35 a year possibly? A little more off the top of my head. It likely will, that number is likely to continue to go down over the years. So the 228 is generally going to be the max unless, you know, the economy turns upside down and home values change. So we'll go to the next one. This is just the projected rate.
Interestingly enough, if the economy changed significantly and the market value of the house went down, the assessed valuation would still not go down. So that, that's something that, that is. I, I think that we can say that growth will grow and, and new houses will come in and, and those things will happen. But if, if, if the, the market value of a house goes down, it doesn't necessarily mean that, that the revenues would change and the tax rate would go up or anything like that.
Correct. Go ahead and go to the next slide. This is just a visual of what it looks like, that, you know, seven to 12 cents. Next slide. I threw this in here just in case somebody wanted to talk and look and see what we were or where we're building. It's not changing what you've seen. I think that is it. Oh, nope. Final one. Remember to vote May 16th, 2023. I can only say remember to vote, but you all can say more than that. So. So that I'm understanding the numbers?
Yes.
I think I am. So when we look at this, you know, the, the tax rate of 2.28, you said was about $45 per year, correct?
Depending on what your home value is. I would say.
So if it's 200,000 assessed value, it'd be about $45.
It's like 35 per year.
But the difference in, in the amounts that could potentially go or remaining at the 28, 2.28 is like $23.
That's a lot of.
The difference in. So the, so at 2.28.
Yeah.
And it theoretically can go down 12 cents on, on the assessed 100,000 based on that.
Yeah.
So we're talking 12 cents for assessed 100,000.
Yes.
Is, is basically what we're talking about.
12, 12, $30, $30, $40 a year.
Yeah, so it's a really, really small amount.
Yes.
It's a very small amount. That's what I hear out of this.
So. Yeah, that, with that, that $30, $40 is what, when people say, well, yeah, you just robbed me of my tax decrease. Okay, for 30, 40 bucks, are you willing to do this for the community?
Well, that's, that's the, the message I'm looking at is when we say, well, gosh, the, you know, the taxes just keep going up and you just keep doing that. When I look at, if, if I kick in 30 bucks a year to be able to do something like that, that feels like a really good deal.
You get $4 million for the schools. Yeah, but 4 million.
Yeah, you get 4 million for it.
Yeah, so at, if you have a $300,000 home, when it goes up to 0.13, it still remains at $2.28.
Right.
But the difference goes to $39 a year.
And that's assessed value, not real value.
That's assessed value. My question is, what are we doing to promote this at the high school to our current senior class? Because most of them are 18 years old and registered to vote. So if we could promote this to our high school seniors.
Yeah, it, it has to be, so it can't come from the teachers.
It cannot come from the teachers now.
And it can't come from, from this, from Scott, but it can certainly come from the students.
Do we have any promotional pieces that we can easily just like take and put on our school social media?
Yeah, we, we do. We've got some messaging that's just, it's factual. And then other people can request people to support it.
Okay.
But that information, there'll be signs out in front of schools. Here's, here's what's in the bond, but it's, it's all factual, but it's promotional because we want people to understand what they're going to get for their money.
Yeah.
And then you can take that, students can take that and say, this is important for us.
So would you like us as student leadership? Would you like us to promote the bond of what the final product will be if it's passed and encourage students to vote?
Yeah.
That's a really good question, and I'll tell you what, what I need to tell you is you need to do what you feel is best for you and the students.
Okay.
That is your role.
And talk to your own parents about it. Yes.
Yeah, I understand that once the ballot title was submitted, the zipper went on certain lips. But, you know, and, and it's, the whole point is, you know, that there was, there were teachers that would push and still do inappropriately a particular political agenda in a classroom. And that's really not, it's, it's more about the process. Maybe your thing should be to get out and vote, but these are the facts. And so you can, you can, you can, there's other things. Make sure they vote for school board, make sure they vote for, there's a, a police levy for the county. There's other things that are there, but as a citizen, get them to exercise their responsibility as a voter.
And that would be exactly it. I would encourage you to encourage your friends that are 18 to exercise their right to have their voices heard. To research the topic.
He calls it a right and I call it a responsibility. But in either case, I, I, my dad rode a boat through a storm from a lighthouse out to a light ship in the middle of the night with another guy, because the other guys on the lighthouse didn't want to vote. Now it's too stormy, we're not doing this. It was a wooden boat. They rode it out to the light ship from the rock up in Alaska. Get out there, get on board, they vote, coming back, who did you vote for? Dewey, who'd you vote for? Truman.
There we go.
But he, he, that's the last story he ever told before he died. He was telling it to the nurse because she was from Alaska, and I happened to be there for that. And he said, and I never miss an election in my life from that day on. So that. So that, when I say right or responsibility, yeah, he considered it to be a responsibility. And, and it didn't matter that they essentially canceled each other's vote. What mattered is that they went to difficult conditions to vote. And somebody got a lightship out there and signaled with little semaphore lights, and he was the radio man. So he signaled back, yes, we're gonna come and vote. So that's, that was his story, but interestingly enough, that is the last story he ever told. And if you know me, and you, you kind of know my dad, he told lots of stories.
Well, then we'll go on to 6.0, visitors address the board on agenda items. Should we have anybody, Kristy? I didn't think so. All right. Well, then we'll go on to 7.0, action item. 7.1 is LCRB action for HS bond security contract.
Do we need individual?
I don't know. Do we need any?
Jessica, usually. Sometimes you want them individual or can we group them together?
Oh, these are all good to be bundled.
I move, we combine 7.1 through 7.5.
I will second for approval.
Okay, it's been moved to accept, or to make 7.1 through 7.5 bundled as action items. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Okay. So do I need to give it a 7.6 to do that?
I move, we approve 7.1 through 7.5.
Thank you. It's been moved in second to accept action 7.1 through 7.5. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Jessica? So are applicants for bond committee, will they need to come to the next board meeting for interview?
Um, they are, that is up to the board. And since the applicant, like the formal application process has happened, I believe both would be 18 by April 26th. So if the board wants to bring them in for an interview, they can. Otherwise, they can just have an action item after reviewing their application.
Okay.
To appoint them. So it's your, your call.
Okay. We know that.
So you guys have between now and then to back out if you want. Okay.
Thank you, Jessica.
All right. So then move to 8.0 is upcoming meeting input. And that is your April 26 regular board meeting. Community impact reward, do we have that taken care of, Kristy? Yep. Okay. And the master curriculum adoption. Anybody else? Anything else?
Do we want to look again at the calendar for any, like in the time count? I was hoping we kind of would do that tonight, but because we have had.
So interesting question.
Changes in our calendar. Do you just want to look at how much time?
Yep. You could, because you have the era.
Have we, on top of that, figured out our process?
Look at these numbers for. And this is a graphic of seniors.
Holton has provided me with a very thorough, his thoughts on moving forward. He and I are gonna meet and we'll discuss it at the 26th.
Would you like to meet like on the 26th or sometime beforehand in private, like?
I'd like you and I to meet in private beforehand and kind of review it.
Okay. Would you like to set up a time, a date and time for that?
Yes, I'll have, Ms. Ward will reach out. My calendar is.
Yeah, she knows it better than you.
It's almost, it's, it's very full, but, but almost invariably flexible in the. Sorry, I got another fire to put out, so. And there's a dog biting me and my, one leg's on fire and the other leg's getting bit by a dog. And other than that, I'm trying to run, so.
I can relate to that a lot.
Yes, I bet you can. All right. Well, with that done, we'll move to 9.0 to adjourn.
So move.
We are adjourned.
That's about the longest board meeting that we have had in forever. They're usually done by 7:30.
Take care of.
I'm here though until 10.